Good evening, it is 6:30. I call the meeting of the Athol Royalston Regional School Committee for June 15th to order. At this point in time, we will stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Mitch?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, approval of minutes from May 18th. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as is.
And Mitch, second. Any discussion about those minutes? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? No? Okay. Thank you. Was there any public input on that list out there? Okay, thank you. All right, just a couple of quick recognitions before we go into the regularly scheduled program. I just wanted to point out that joining myself this evening up here is John Salavartis, who will be kind of in the role of leading the brigade this evening, and also our new committee secretary Jessica Thero. Was I good? Okay, perfect. Thank you. I wrote it down as it sounded. Thank you. Okay, John?
So actually, in recognizing our... In recognizing our retirees, this is kind of a difficult point to be in when we come to the end of the year. Because I believe it is difficult for us as the district sometimes to recognize and fully express the gratitude that we feel for those people that are retiring. Because I know that as we move forward, we will have a void that will be empty for a while. And folks that we have come to rely on, we will miss as they move on into other ventures. And it is difficult to actually express the type of gratitude that we have for all that they have done, not just for our students, but for other staff and district as a whole. So we do want to thank them, their contributions, and their service as they do move on, and for all that they've done for the betterment of the Athol Royalston Public Schools. So with that, what I would like to ask is for Dave King to come up and to do our first round of recognitions.
Thank you. We actually have two we're going to recognize tonight. One of them just recently notified us that she would be retiring. So our first recognition is to Cheryl Jelly. Cheryl began her career in Arkansas Public Schools as a math and science teacher in 1996. In August of 2000, she was hired as a math teacher at Athol High School. Over her 20-plus years of teaching math at AHS, Cheryl has been tremendously versatile, teaching every math course that we have to offer. Outside of the classroom, Cheryl coached cheerleading, has been an advisor on numerous occasions, served many years as an advisor to student council, and most recently chaperoned the sophomore trip to Washington DC. We are grateful to Cheryl for her 22 years of service through our math department, our school, and the numerous students who passed through our classroom doors. We worship nothing but the best in terms of health and happiness, and the good fortune of being able to spend much of her time with her beloved family. Thank you Cheryl for all your service to Athol High School. Come on Cheryl. Our second is Sherry Johnstone. Sherry has been one of the most loyal and dedicated educational professionals over her 34 years of service to Athol Royalston. She began her career in Athol Royalston in 1988, and besides a few years in the private sector, dedicated her work to some of our most fragile students. She worked in both Tully Lake and Miller's River Alternative School before finally moving to Athol High School, where she utilized her developed skill set to support students in achieving their goal of graduating from high school. Sherry is admired for caring and empathetic qualities and her willingness to be flexible on a day-to-day basis. She always met the needs of the students and the school. Sherry will be dearly missed, but deserves the time to reap the rewards of the retirement lifestyle, which I'm sure will include uninterrupted time in the garden, except when the bear decides to be.
Oh yeah, that's true, yeah.
And the sweet smell of food from her kitchen as she enjoys her passion for cooking. Sherry, we wish you nothing but the best, and you well-deserved retire.
Thank you, David. Next up would be Julie Stanley.
Hi, good evening. Tonight I have the pleasure of honoring Ms. Cynthia Drew, who's not here, but I'd like to share a few words about her. Many have had the pleasure of working with Ms. Cindy Drew for over 20 years here at the Athol Royalston Middle School. Armed staff would say that they have always had a great respect for her as a teacher in our futures program, working with some of our most fragile students. Cindy is truly committed to all her students, and it is her respect and caring for each of them individually that has helped to guide their success. Many times, she has maintained relationships with them and their families after they leave the middle school and turn me out to high school. Cindy is extremely knowledgeable as a special education teacher, and is able to apply the knowledge to meet all of her students' needs in her classroom. Her colleagues always admired her calm and caring approach while they're dealing with students, staff, or families. She will truly be missed at the Athol Royalston Middle School, and we wish her nothing but the best in her future endeavors.
Thank you, Julie. Next up would be Principal Shannon Cleveland.
Come on up, Ms. Denise. You don't have to say anything, but you have to stand. It is my pleasure to recognize and celebrate Denise Ricks. Denise has been a long-tenured pair of serving aces and prior at both RCS and Pleasant Street. I was good until you came. Denise has provided 22 years of service to the students and families of ARSD. Denise is dedicated and hardworking. She is truly a model pair for what inclusion should look like. She supports staff in how to work with students, and she truly believes that all students can learn. She brought a calm nature and positive demeanor. When things were difficult, you'd never know it, because she tackled everything with patience and kindness. You could never tell there was a problem, because she just tackled whatever came up. She never needed to be asked or directed on what to do, because her belief and love of children comes naturally. Denise was the quiet calm that reassured both students and staff in some of our recent educational storms. It is my pleasure to have worked with Denise and the children and families of Athol Royalston, lucky to have had your service.
Thank you, Shannon. Next up in our presentations, Principal Becky Janda.
Good evening. It's my honor to have been asked to speak about Ed tonight. But Ed, if you want to come up? A random choice, but hopefully, okay. One of the first people I met when I started in the district just about two years ago was Ed, as I wandered into his office filled with Chromebooks, wires, connectors, and computer parts. And I introduced myself, and I asked him for a device when he had time. Within minutes, he had set me up, and I was ready to go. I had to wonder if he was on his best welcoming behavior, if it was possible someone was really always this nice. It turns out that Ed is always genuinely that welcoming, that patient, and that kind. He also always listens to his staff's thoughts and opinions to make sure all opinions are heard and respected. Ed started working in the district in January of 2014. Prior to that, he was the IT Director for Mohawk Trail Regional, Palamont, and Rose School Districts. My understanding is that Ed has always worked extremely hard and long hours, but that one of the biggest challenges he faced came when the world and subsequently the district had to shut down for COVID in the spring of 2020. Ed acted quickly to make sure that devices were given to families, that hotspots were arranged for those without internet, that the school committee and the superintendent meetings were virtually available, that all calls were made to keep people informed, that the staff had the tools they needed so that students, families, and the district could remain connected, safe, and learning. I've heard about how tirelessly and patiently he worked to support families, support staff, and support administration through the unprecedented need for instant technology and answers. RCS was still a dial-up system at that time, but Ed worked to bring internet to RCS in conjunction with the town of Royalston to support the remote learning option that many families desperately needed for their health and safety. As principal of RCS this past year, Ed has been assigned as one of our administrator buddies. He took this role seriously and was always collaborating with me at our meetings when we got into school groups. He also ensured that either he, Chris, or Josh supported RCS students and staff for all of our testing. Ed would respond to my emails almost immediately, and often hopped right in his car to come and support us anytime the technology needs went beyond a simple fix. One morning, we came into the building to find no internet, and Ed was right there as soon as I called to try and support us. He came to my office mid-morning to tell me in his calm way how he tried one server and then another, and then used technical words that I really didn't understand at all to explain the rest of what he had done to troubleshoot in the building. At the end of his very calm explanation, I had to admit that I had absolutely no idea what he had just said. But I was wondering, is our internet back on? He looked at me, smiled, and in Ed's way said, "No." But it does mean I need to go back to Athol where there is internet to communicate with the company to get them out here, because the problem most definitely lies outside the building and not in it. With anyone else, this may have been a frustrating answer, but with Ed working as hard as he was and smiling when he told me we were still down, I knew that no matter what, he would keep working to make sure it was back on for us. The next morning, he let me know that it was fixed around 11:00 PM that evening. Ed's touched so many lives in his role as a district technology director, both behind the scene and on the front lines. But one of the biggest contribution that he has has been to be that model of kindness in a world and time where that's not always present. Imagine if we could all strive to be half as calm as Ed in the midst of storms, half as patient in the midst of multiple demands, half as soft-spoken in the midst of competing voices, and half as welcoming to those just trying to fit in, how our district and the world would be so much better for it. As Ed winds down over the next two weeks, I'm sure that you will join me in wishing him a much deserved retirement with his wife, children, and especially his grandchildren, filled with the kindness and peace he so graciously shared with all of us the last 10 years.
Thank you, Becky. Next up for presentations is our facilities director, Stephen Firmino.
Richard Kimble retired after 20 years of service, and I'd like to thank him for all his dedication and hard work and loyalty to this district. He wasn't able to make it tonight, which is too bad he couldn't make it. But I'd like to present this for his appreciation and dedication as a senior custodian for the Athol Royalston Regional School District for the last 20 years. Thank you.
I'd also like to acknowledge someone who is moving on, not to retirement, but to another position as assistant superintendent in a district nearby. And that would be Molly Superti. I know that Molly has worked here a number of years, I believe over eight years at this point. She has acted as a principal, is also the curriculum director, and expanded roles also as a Title IX coordinator. I know from my experience over the last couple of years, I've gotten a chance to know Molly and know of her interests, and her passions relevant to education, especially what I find helpful was very much a perspective of data-driven information sharing. So I found that time with her over the last couple of years to be very rewarding and building for me personally, just from her knowledge alone. So we want to thank Molly again as she moves on into another district. Next, I'd like to actually ask Dan Beavis to come up. I believe Dan has a couple of presentations for us.
All right, I'm to present the Subway Scholar-Athlete Awards in this month. One for student at the middle school, one student at the high school. I'm going to begin with Jalen Chapolonis, who was an eighth grader, soon to be ninth grader. She was a member of our varsity softball team this past spring. Coaches talked very highly of her. She was a great teammate, somebody who took coaching very well, learned a lot, and improved immensely as the season went on. And she was also one of the top students in the current, former eighth grade class, current freshman class. So I'd like to call up Jalen Chapolonis. Our high school recipient is a two-sport athlete, was a member of our varsity baseball team this past spring. When I talked to Coach Talbot about him, nothing but complimentary things to say about Shay. You know, from my viewing on the sidelines, he was somebody that Coach Talbot could put in any of the nine positions. And he handled it well wherever they needed him to go. I've had Shay as a student in class, great leader, always does what he's asked. So I think he's very deserving in the awards. I'd like to call up Shay Brennan as our high school recipient.
Rule, and nobody said, "Hey, you're muted." Tammy?
I do have one. Lonnie and I had the privilege of traveling with the class of 2024 on their much anticipated and two years in the making Washington DC trip. Tonight, I would like to recognize a group of teachers at the high school who made the trip very successful. I would first like to recognize Anne DeBarrows, our lead chaperone, who went above and beyond to make sure that our kids had a great experience. She ensured all but two meals were paid for and set up wonderful experiences for the kids in the trip. In addition, I would like to thank the chaperones Cheryl Jelly, Jacob Bensko, Riley Siza, and Fred Marks for their assistance and comedy during the trip. I would be remiss not to mention the amazing bus driver we had, Mike Johnson, from the local Bolsen Bus Company in Templeton. I would also like to especially thank the parents of the class of 2024 for coming through and assisting with last-minute funds to get us on the road, as well as a large number of snacks and waters they donated. Lastly, I would like to thank Mr. King for supporting the trip that had been postponed during the last two school years due to COVID. Your willingness to help keep this trip alive gave many kids in our district an opportunity to travel to the nation's capital. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Lonnie, Elaine, Laura, Brittany, Carla, Mitch? I have a few things. I want to first of all recognize all the teachers and administrators that were involved in so many great ceremonies these last couple of weeks. One of the great joys of being on the school committee is being able to attend step-up ceremonies and graduations and things like that. And from the pre-K step-up ceremonial graduation to the grade eight graduation they attended, and then class day and high school graduation, it was really great to be able to see the kids progress all the way through. The only ones I missed were the fifth grade, I guess, going on to the fourth grade, going on to the middle school, and then, sorry, Becky, I didn't get to RCS. But what I did see was extremely impressive, and the excitement of kids all the way from the five-year-olds that are ready for kindergarten in the next year, stepping up to kindergarten, all the way to the high school students that are stepping up into, for some, a career and for some college. It's extremely impressive. So thanks to all those who organized all those. It also gives me a great deal of pleasure to... Well, we said before I say that, I want to say another thing that I went to that was really great was the multilingual picnic, multilingual learner and English language learner picnic. And that one was absolutely stupendous. It was over at the Tully Lake, and we had a lot of principals and a lot of teachers there, but most of all, we had a ton of kids and parents and families there. And it was absolutely stupendous with all kinds of great food and great company, and a lot of English was spoken, and her a little bit of Spanish dusted off a little bit of my my high school Spanish un poquito, as I said. But it was just wonderful. And I said to Shannon Cleveland, I think it was, Principal Cleveland, that out of everything I've been to, I couldn't think of anything that was more important than celebrating and supporting those students. And thinking back, that when we had students in the past who were speaking different languages, there was some support for them, but not nearly the levels of support that we have these days. And Shannon responded by saying, "Well, if we regard belongingness as important," and we certainly do, "then this was certainly one of the most important events of the year, and turned out terrific." So thank you to everybody involved. So then, I said, "It gives me a great deal of pleasure to recognize Athol's Citizen of the Year, and that is Tammy Duquette, who was honored at the Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday night this week, two days ago, for all the work that she does on the school committee, all the work that she does with sports or athletics in the town, all the work she does to support kids and families of every age. So I wanted to make sure we recognize her here as well. That's outstanding, Tammy. Thank you very much. And then, would this be a time that I... Okay. We're missing someone who's been extremely important to our school over the last five years. As you have noticed, John is sitting in tonight in a place that Darcy Fernandez has been almost every single school committee meeting. And Darcy has spent so much time in the district and in all the schools of the district. I wanted to recognize her as she goes on to other interests and another position. She certainly was responsible along with her central office staff, principals, and so many teachers and paraprofessionals for the strong academic gains that our district has made over the last five years for improved professional development. She has been an expert. We knew she was coming in, but we certainly saw it when she got here. She was an expert in using data to inform instruction to measure how students were learning and where they were learning extremely well, and where they were not learning quite as well, and putting measures in place to ensure that there was improvement in those areas. I think one of the areas that Carla and I often talked about over the years is that as soon as Darcy noticed or was pointed out to her that there was some problem in the district, it seems like other superintendents, it would take them sometimes months, sometimes years to react. But Darcy, as soon as there was a problem, by the next school committee, she would have, "Okay, here's how we're going to handle this problem, or here's how we're going to handle this deficit or deficiency for the next two months, and then we're going to get this other thing in place that will help us to deal with it for the next year or two." So she really reacted almost immediately to areas that needed improvement. We made major gains in equity over the last five years. I know that it was so important to her and to this school committee as well, ensuring that every child, regardless of socioeconomic background, race, ethnic origin, academic ability, special needs, religion, that every single child was treated fairly and was fully supported in their attempt to reach their potential. She worked with teachers and administrators in strengthening instruction in the classroom, using best practices, tiered levels of instruction, tiered levels of support. During her time here, she received a Massachusetts Superintendent's Award. She was one of the original founders and a major contributor to the group called Influence 100 that strived to get equity throughout the Commonwealth. Along with people like Carla and Nancy, is Nancy here? Okay, Carla and Nancy Melbourne, and before that, Deb. We all accompanied her on a number of trips, innumerable trips. Well, several, at least I'll say, to the state conference in Massachusetts, the Conference of Massachusetts Superintendents and School Committees, where she was always regarded with respect and admiration. Most of all, I think she really, really cared about kids of all ages. I've served under about 14 or 15 different superintendents, I believe, and I've rarely seen anyone who was in schools and in classrooms more often. She even taught some classes in summer school. And I know that, again, Carla and Nancy, not Nancy, Deb Kozmescus, when she was on the committee, we accompanied her to a number of classrooms in almost, not almost every school, in every school, on several occasions. And it was always an eye-opening experience, and she was, again, in those classrooms almost more than anybody that I had previously seen. It's been said that a teacher affects eternity, that he or she can never tell where his or her influence ends. And Darcy was started out as a teacher, then she became a teacher of teachers, and I'm sure that she has impacted in a very positive way so many students in our district and in others as well. So I want to recognize her. She could not be here this evening, but I hope that she has the opportunity to. She could not be here this evening, but I hope that she has the opportunity to watch us and see this recognition. And I, again, appreciate all that she's done and wish her, and I'm sure we all wish her the very best of luck in the future.
And before we trudge into new business, I did want to formally welcome to the committee meeting this evening and to the the communities of Royalston and Athol, our incoming superintendent, Matt Aronworth is here. He spent the day in the district today, meeting with various administrators, et cetera. He sat in on the Facility Subcommittee earlier, and I've already enlisted his services to either build a track or look at fixing the ceilings at Athol High School. So, I wanted to give him an opportunity to speak this evening.
So, first, I would really just like to thank the committee and the community for having me here. I am absolutely thrilled to be joining the Athol Royalston team, and I can tell you, it is an all-star team. I have already been working with the principals, central administration, and I've been meeting other staff, and I can't tell you how impressed I am with the work that they do. And I am looking forward to actually beginning my work on July 1st, but even before then and well after then, just continuing the excellent work that Darcy started and expanding upon it and moving the district forward. So, thank you all.
Okay, under new business, tiered focus review.
So, I know that I've given updates to the School Committee V4 about our tiered focus monitoring process. And for those folks that might be new to the committee, this is essentially something that's cyclic. Every two and a half to three years or so, we go through a cycle of providing a record review information and letters of assurance to the state relevant to how we actually perform our functions in special education. So, a lot of this for us is actually an issue of how we engage in compliance and documenting and proving to the state that the services that we provide to students are actually the services that are in their IDPs. So, this is basically year one of our cycle. We are putting together essentially student record reviews, providing other documentations relevant to examples of different points relevant to special ed, civil rights and ELL. Actually, at this point, we have already submitted our ELL report to the state, and by July 14th, we will submit both these special ed and civil rights portions. And we are very close to having records completed for that process and probably will submit before July 14th.
Any questions for John on that? Okay, thank you. Juneteenth, I believe the reason why Juneteenth was added to the schedule, added to the agenda was under Russell's advice because it needed to have a formal vote. So, Russell, my impression would be that this would affect, would this affect the entire district employee base?
It would.
Okay. So, basically, we just need to make a motion to add Juneteenth to the holiday schedule. Mitch?
We add Juneteenth or June 19th to the holiday schedule.
No second.
Any discussion? Russell?
And obviously, it's a it's an unpaid day normally under state law, so the vote is really to make it paid.
So, I'll amend my motion to indicate that it be a recognized as a holiday in the Athol Royalston Regional School District and that it be a paid holiday as such.
No, second.
Okay, anything further? John?
Actually, the recommendation from the superintendent is that all twelve-month employees should be approved for the Juneteenth holiday. There is a recommendation from the ATA relevant to certain staff actually being paid for Juneteenth. She does not agree with that based on the fact that those employees do not get paid for other holidays.
Russell?
So, the normal caveat that I've seen in other places is that if the school year, if you're a ten-month employee and the school year doesn't go past the 19th, then obviously you don't get it. It's like July 4th. It has to be within your work year. So, is that the issue that Darcy was raising?
I'm not sure.
Okay. So, you could amend the vote to be clear that if you're an employee that normally gets paid holidays under your contract or because your school year goes beyond that date, that they would get the day. But I would agree with Darcy saying that for some employees, they get zero holidays, it wouldn't make sense to just pay this one. So, you could make the motion so it's clear that it's only for people that typically get holidays, that it would be paid for those people, and that the work year for the person would have to extend beyond June 19th in order to get the day. So, much longer motion.
I think I, that's what I heard Mitch say.
Right. So, I would amend the motion to indicate that, that it those people who get paid for the the regular holidays get paid for that holiday as long as their work year does extend past the Juneteenth holiday.
No, second that again.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, extensions? Ah, boy. Thank you. Okay, moving along, Equity Team Kids.
Believe we have Beth Gospoderic and members of the Equity Team to do a presentation on their work this year. I believe, Beth, we have a video and a slide presentation?
We have video and a slide presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Hello?
I'm Lindsay Sanz. I'm Sisweli.
Okay. And we're all part of the Athol Royalston Regional School District Equity Team, and we've had an equity team for about three years. And sometimes it feels like you might not notice that we're here, but we have been impactful in in affecting the strategic plan to some degree and in working with principals. All these guys are also on the Diversity Club at Athol High School, and there's overlap. They bring news from the Diversity Team back there and this. So, the first thing is we created a video so that so that the community and you are aware of why it's important to do this work.
So, the Equity Team sent out a survey, and with the results of that survey, the Diversity Club made a video for Athol Equity One. And the purpose of this video is to help put forth the Equity Team's action plan. Do you want to talk about that?
That's the slideshow after the video.
So, we hope you enjoy, and that'll be put up.
They're working on it.
The Athol Royalston Regional School District, in partnership with the community, provides a safe, innovative, and vibrant learning environment for all students. We foster academic excellence by implementing best practices, improving facilities, appreciating diversity, and requiring accountability. Our graduates are lifelong learners and discerning users of technology who exercise social and civic responsibility and adapt to the ever-changing world. We have a start. We are here together after a long, isolating pandemic. Belongingness is a conscious focus in each school. Administrators have had training about why belongingness matters. Restorative strategies are being implemented to address hurtful and hateful actions and more trade for teachers' land this summer. This school year, if you're a veteran initiative, speakers, and programs for students around building empathy, students and adults are gathered and speaking out. For example, the AHS Diversity Club, the A to Z Club, the Equity Team Memorial. But we are not there yet, not even close. In a February 2022 survey, eighty-six students from the high school and middle school responded. The following stories are from the lived experiences of our students and in their own words. The eighty-six responses we received clearly show that students are emphatically asking we continue to work for positive change. When asked about their school experience, from one equally very negative to five equally very positive, the average responder would get a experience of two point four. Kids in my classes are rude if you don't act like them. People at school always say fun about their expression, got made fun of my racist comments. Two students were probably named, I felt really bad. I just felt like going home. It was so bad. I won't feel safe in the school a lot of the time. I'm sick of the bad grades. I've been trying so hard but only get D's, so I'm going home and getting grounded. Teachers are family name, and I'm telling myself. Adults say it's our school, so treat it like it's our school. I was a decent student, almost online school, behind my grades dropped. It was hard focus. I didn't understand the word. Even once I came back in person, my grades were so bad. I was a person who thought my intelligence was based on my grades. I was really thinking I wouldn't make it in high school, meaning that I wouldn't get the job I want and barely make any money. It's sad that schools can leave this effect on students. Students talk shit about the L G B T T community all the time. Teachers should reward good behavior and teach students of the speed they learn. A student made a joke to his friend about Asian people and their eyes, and when I turned my head, he said, I didn't mean it. It was a joke. I know for sure he wouldn't have said sorry if I wasn't Asian. I wouldn't say it really affects my success as a school, but it does make me hate school. Kids may get bothered with me, but I choose to ignore it. Even though I do, it still bothers me and makes me wonder if it's true. Students at this school, women and men, slurries are very diverse. Faculty does not only stop it. Overall, the school is not here to educate students or faculty on meaning of this word. Letting these kids smile really reflects what kind of school we are. People should be accountable for what they say and do. Students and faculty need to be included. Since I moved to AHS, I've had no real positive things happen to me. My freshman year, my first year at AHS, people would walk up to me and make fun of my hair, my face, my voice, my weight, the fact that I'm Cuban. A student would, and still constantly, come up to me and call me slurs that I won't write and gave me a piece of brief instruction paper and told me that I not belong and doesn't like my group cards. All three years, I have been bullied and harassed at this school, and no one has done anything to stop it, and it's affected how I handle situations and how I don't trust the district to do the right thing. Ever since they came out as non-binary and taking a girl, some people thought it was weird and ignored that part. It didn't really affect me much, but at one point in time, it did affect my mental health. I rate this school five. I have success at school because I have all my friends that back me up, and they're always there for me. This rating of five out of five shows what can happen when students feel that they belong in our schools. Our district equity action plan is as follows. Goal one, develop restorative practices to build belongingness and create a safer culture for all identities to honor everyone's dignity. And goal two, to consciously foster academic equity. Equity action plan, that way the word raises as identity system students, that does their school, and introduces more creative processes with affirmative, supportive, and positive people based on race, ethnicity, gender identity, and sexual orientation. More transparency and accountability when it comes to issues of discipline, provide more educational opportunities for students about cultural diversity, and introduce curated advisory lessons, family treats, genology exploration related to diversity and inclusion, promoting wellness and belonging in these campaigns, like the See Something, Say Something program, education and training, and addressing the use of slurs in school. Still, this works by more diverse authors and artists. We have some resources. Student-created lesson plans dealing with the use of slurs in school. The ARRSD District Strategic Plan, District Equity Team, made up of teachers, students, parents, and community members, cooperation and collaboration with other school groups like the A to Z Club. Educational equity means that each student receives the resources and opportunities needed to thrive. A student's success is not predetermined by race, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, ability, home or first language, national origin, age or physical appearance. The Athol Royalston Regional School District Equity Committee strives to ensure an equitable and respectful learning environment for every student, family, and staff member. We commit ourselves to actions that put into practice our individual and institutional values of diversity, inclusion, and equity.
And that's the movie. To, we're going to lead into the Equity Team's plan, like, action plan going forward. Do you have any questions for the kids on the video before we do that stuff?
Do you have plans to do a similar survey again next year, potentially after maybe some things have been implemented, just to kind of see if anything that's been done is helping students who may have scored a low?
That is actually part of the action plan to progress monitor, to do benchmarks and progress monitor. I don't know if it... Okay, so here's the here's the plan. It's still a little bit of a messy pancake. It's not perfect, but these are the things that we're moving forward on. So, this is what the Equity Team believes works from, that educational equity is when all students get what they need to be academically successful, regardless of their external or internal social or cultural contexts. This is what we've been doing all year. We reflect on what's happening in the district, and we try to progress monitor. For example, sometimes we go to principals' meetings and check up on the parts that relate to equity on the strategic plan, and we 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 bring some rigor to that. I mean, there's already rigor, but we bring equity eyeballs. And so, then, we we're monitoring family connection, rigor, and belongingness, the equity pieces of that. Um, the Equity Team is a group that includes students, parents, teachers, community members, and administrators. It meets monthly, and sometimes people do this work whenever they need to because they know it's important. This is the third year the group's been going, and it collaborates with the Student Diversity Club, and there's some crossover in membership. To continue focusing on our priority of students getting what they need in the ARSD, the Equity Team worked together to identify these priorities. Goal one, build belongingness and create a safer culture for all identities where everyone is treated with dignity. This would include some speakers, modeling and practicing difficult conversations related to identity with staff. After staff are trained, these strategies are taught to students. Intentionally creating a community of trust and belongingness among staff, setting measurable goals and collecting data to know if we've reached them, developing a belongingness benchmark to progress monitor. So, that's hopefully what you're talking about. Offering professional development for teachers and staff around restorative practices, piloting specific strategies, developing a consistent protocol which includes an educational component as well as an acknowledgement of the hurt caused to respond to incidents of hate speech in our schools. So, that's the goal, one, the belongingness goal. There's also an academic goal. And with this, we want to research other ways to assess, research competency-based rating practices in secondary schools, and find some models in other districts of other ways to assess students, and to better implement And to better implement inclusion, set up a training of trainers, teaching and modeling systems among teacher teams. In all content areas, intentionally supporting culturally responsive curriculum by planning intentional entry points related to Athol roast and local culture. And then, having people that have had success share those successes and their exemplar lessons or materials with their peers. And that's what we're moving forward with, going forward.
Your team has obviously done a huge amount of work, and a huge amount of research and talking to everybody. You've got a vision and a plan. Oh, sorry, I'm muted, of course. So... So the question is, have you seen, and has anything been done, been implemented so far that seems to be having success? Can you point to any significant success at this point in time? Or are you just still in the planning and strategizing stage?
Well, I wouldn't credit the whole Equity Team, but I think there has been significant training of administrators. And I think that has been a huge catalyst, or whatever, so that people understand the importance of belongingness.
So you can see it make a difference in classrooms, in some cases, anyway?
Well, I think we've got a long way to go, Carla, but I think we have, the administrators have a vision, the Equity Team has a vision. The next step is getting more teachers. I think teachers are on board, but getting some actual practices they can use, and then have that, use those as trainers with students. So we've done some things, but in the classrooms, as you can see from the video, students have varying experiences. Yes, yes, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to add another note to your question. I think it won't take effect as quickly as we hoped for it to, because ignorance is very normalized, you know? I'm pretty sure this hasn't been a topic people, like, you know, willingly want to speak about, because it's an uncomfortable topic, you know? If it can be left alone, people are going to leave it alone. But now that we're actually, you know, hitting it right on, it's going to take some time for people to catch on and for people to understand that, you know, this is a chance for us to become educated. This is a chance for us to, you know, help other people feel like they belong in our school.
I understand how long this kind of thing takes. It's a basic culture change. And you all are learning this at this point, just how patient you have to be and how much work you have to do before it changes. Good work and keep going.
And the other thing that we have is a really good team. So, that's that part. I'm actually making one more presentation with an ESL hat on. So I guess, anything else, or at least, or does anyone else want to say something? Okay, thank you.
So Beth, you're doing a presentation on our Seal of Bilinguality?
Yes, this is, there's certainly overlap with the Equity work, but this is my work. I'm also the ESL director in the district, and we have some really good news. You might remember, I mean, I don't expect you to remember, but in February sometime, I gave a presentation about the state of the ESL department. I said, "And we're working towards getting some students to be awarded the Seal of Bilinguality." And guess what? It happened. So it was really a nice thing, and I'll explain. So, it's based in the state of Massachusetts, and me and many, many people think that bilingualism is a super, superpower, because it builds empathy, affinity, it builds connection with others, it gives an advantage for employment and applying for colleges. There's some scholarships here, if you get the Seal of Bilinguality that you are eligible to apply for. In any Massachusetts state school, the Mount, Pittsburgh State, UMass, you can get up to four credits that you don't have to pay for if you can earn the Seal of Bilinguality. So it's a really good thing. But how do you get it, right? You have to achieve the English language, and English language is our graduation requirement, including the MCAS, right? So, you have to do everything everybody else does in the LA to get out of high school. But then you also have to pass a state-approved competencies test in a language other than English to demonstrate a high-level proficiency in listening, speaking, reading, and writing. So it's actually longer than the MCAS. It's a big, long test in another heritage language. There's two levels. You can get the Seal of Bilinguality or the Seal of Bilinguality with Distinction. And that's the next one we're going for. This year, we tested in Portuguese, French, Spanish, and Vietnamese. And two graduates qualified, so it's a really big deal. And congratulations to Jetsua Castillo Vargas and Nikki Sila Fletcha. And three others, underclassmen, have already met the heritage language requirements, and a half dozen or so more are close. So some of them, like, took the 10th grade MCAS, we don't know what happened. It's actually the English requirement that we're waiting on for them. And the other half dozen or so that passed in three domains, but maybe not in writing, we're trying to come up with some enrichment and to support heritage language in the coming year at AHS. And we will test again next year, and so it's open to all first languages, including English. The only requirement is to demonstrate proficiency in two languages. So if something's like stellar in a language that they learned themselves, then, or they learned in our high school, they could also take this test, and it's possible to get the Seal of Bilinguality. So, that's happy news. Thank you.
Okay, you do have the, under Communications, you do have the district enrollment current totals that are included every month. So if you have any questions or comments, feel free to reach out to myself or to the central office. Financial statements and approval of accounts. Yes?
I heard you say if you have any questions or comments, to reach out to somebody, but I did want to make the comment, hopefully speaking for others on the school committee as well, especially since our incoming superintendent, is he still here in office? Ah, still here. And that is, as I looked at the enrollment stats, it looked like there were some few grades that they were starting to creep up on. And does anybody have that handy? I'm trying to dig that out. Thank you. Yes, I noted that in kindergarten, we've got a class of 23 and a class of 22. And I know that those can creep up very quickly, so I wanted to emphasize that this school committee has long supported a low student-teacher enrollment, especially in the younger grades, especially in pre-K K1 and 2. And I think originally, when, a few years back, when we talked about what those grades, we were talking about, trying to keep them to 18 to 22, excuse me, 18 to 20, they've since crept up to 21, 22 or so. But I am eager to see them kept under 22. So, as we go into next year, and we decide again where to proportion our funding, I want to keep our eye on that and make sure that we still stand strongly for the low teacher ratio.
Thank you, Mitch. Financial statements and approval of accounts.
So I've provided the expenditure report, the grant expense report, and the budget by function code report. If there are any questions on the expenditure report or the grant expense report, I'll jump into the budget by function code. Are there any questions? No? Okay. So for the budget by function code, I've highlighted three different functions. So the first function is the instructional services function. We've had some savings in that, given turnover throughout this school year. And so I would like to use some of that funding to pay for overages in the fixed charges and the other school services and the operations and maintenance lines. This was discussed back in, I believe it was February or March, when we were talking about handling some projects off the wish list for principals, and how we would fund them is through E and D, and this flows into the E and D. So, with that, I provided a budget line transfer request for a vote for everyone to transfer $180,000 from the budget codes highlighted above to the specific budget codes highlighted in the maintenance accounts and in the fixed charges accounts. I'd like to request a vote for that transfer.
I'll make a motion to transfer $180,000, as noted in the request above.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item that I wanted to highlight is for the fiscal year '23 budget. Our budgets were approved by both towns in the past few days, so great news. And then for the next item, fiscal year '23 transportation. Recently, we received word from Merrifield that we do have some overcrowding on the bus. And I know last year, we had discussed eliminating school choice and riders within 1.5 miles of schools. I know that this year, given the start of the school year and how crazy it was, the school committee had agreed to not eliminate those riders at the end. But I did want to just highlight, this is something for us to think about, because if there is overcrowding, we'll need to get an additional bus. So I'm not requesting a vote or anything, but I did just want to bring it to the full school committee. The next item is the AP warrant. The warrant is being passed around. There's the one from last month, because we had to do it outside of this normal meeting. And then, there was the one from this one. So I did want to just highlight that that is going around, and would request your signatures. And then the last thing that I had on the list was the district wish list for, as of June 9. And this is just to highlight some of the projects that we're getting done this year with the E and D funding and the vote that you guys had back in, I think it was March. So that's all I have. Are there any questions on any of that?
Just to bring it to the committee's attention, I'm jumping ahead just a little bit on the budget subcommittee, but it makes sense to talk about the AP warrant. Moving forward, past this month, the process will be, Russell provided us with language that there's a state law that allows one person to be responsible for the signing of the AP warrant, so that there's no delays in payments, and the chair will sign the AP warrant. You still are more than welcome, we can still provide each and every committee member with a copy of it. Russell, does it still need to come here to be voted? Or does the one signature rule allow for that to be processed? Okay.
Yep. It still needs to be reviewed by the committee. So one way to prove that happened, or available to the committee, so one way for that to be proven is you would have a vote just to essentially confirm it later. So the one member would review and approve, and then you'd vote later to just confirm what happened, basically. Some places put it on a consent agenda, which means there's no discussion, it's just voted.
Good. Thank you. We'll make that happen. And again, we can also ensure that all the committee members get a copy of it in their email, moving forward. Okay, just make sure that you recheck and revisit the AP warrant, because there was two, and I know, I think I missed the second one, so if you could just check it before you leave. Mitch?
Just noting, and you and I were both at the town meeting and TAMI as well, and noting that there was absolutely no discussion on that motion to approve our budget. Virtually no discussion on any motion, but certainly that budget required almost unending amounts of work from Leah, from the principals, from the superintendent, from the budget subcommittee that you chair, Lee. So I'd like to congratulate anybody who worked on that budget, because it's obviously all the hard work and the groundwork that people do before the budget is submitted. That means that it goes through the members of town meeting with near a question and near a concern, and it went through, as far as I know unanimously, from, I don't know, what do we have, about 80 or 90 members of the town there? Something like that, and nobody had any concerns about it. And that's somewhat rare for a budget that's, what, $5 million or so that the town was voting through? So thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Under reports of the chair, just one thing. A question did come up regarding Juneteenth, and I ran the information past Russell, who also ran it by Leah. And I will clarify the vote on Juneteenth if we need to. Russell, do you think we need to reconsider, or can I just go through it and just read the clarity?
I would read it for clarity, because the vote was pretty consistent with that.
Okay. Just to clarify what the Juneteenth meeting vote meant, it would be based upon contract language as follows. All Group 1 and Group 2 employees, 10 and 12 months, get paid holidays, including ones that extend past the school year. Admin assistance, tech assistance. I will, unfortunately, because I'm reading this email, broach the subject of using the word para in public, would not get paid. So that's why I can say it's in public, because there's no financial gain. They would get the day off if the school year goes over the 19th, which very rarely does. Teachers would not get paid. They would get the day off, however, if the school year goes over the 19th. All custodial staff would get paid as long as they worked the workday before and after that day, after the paid holiday, or have permission from the supervisor to take those days off. And in response to the other question was, this does take effect for Monday? Okay? Any questions? Okay. Budget Finance Subcommittee, basically you heard Leah's report. And again, the AP warrant has just been kind of tightened up a little bit, so we don't have to try to get 10 people to come in, you know, if there's an issue with a vote or, you know, running of the warrant, et cetera. So that'll make that process cleaner. Facilities, buildings, and grounds.
Facilities, buildings, and ground meant this evening, our six o'clock meeting, with a list of things that are either happening, in the process of happening, or there's some that you will notice that are started, but there's delays, and they won't be finished until 2023 due to supplies. And there's some that we're still waiting on bids for, to come in and then to figure out our plan, so that's about all to present.
Okay. Thank you. Negotiations, Nancy's not here, so we'll skip over that report for this evening. Academic Excellence Subcommittee.
Both that and the Public Relations Subcommittee were prevented from meeting by elaborate technical difficulties.
Okay.
Spent half an hour trying to solve and couldn't do it.
That's fine. Thank you. Policy sub.
Policy currently has five up for first reads. I don't know technically if I need to read through all of them here, but they were in your packet for review. They were unanimously approved in the subcommittee back in April. They were supposed to be in your May packet, but I'm not quite sure why they weren't. That's okay. But they are here for your first read. Do we need to read them out?
I kind of use the terminology as submitted on the agenda.
Okay, I'll go with that. So there are currently five as submitted, and they will come back next month for a second read. And that's all for policy.
Okay, thank you.
So.
We need to vote just them, we need to vote those five as a first reading.
Okay.
That, that's what we normally do.
Yeah, and you don't need to read them because it, they're available to the public as part of this process, they're, they'd be in the, uh, packet.
So we need to vote tonight?
You just, you just vote to say that they, um, for, here from the first reading.
Do we need to go one by one?
No.
Okay, I'll move them all for first reading.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Okay, uh, committee member referrals, we'll start with Mitch this time.
Uh, I'm not going to repeat everything that I said before, but I did notice that when I said it before, that my microphone was off for the entire thing. So I just want to summarize to say that I'm eager to see us continue as a school committee to support a low student-teacher ratio, particularly in the younger grades, but in all grades. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla.
Uh, nothing here.
Okay, Brittany?
None at this time.
Laura?
None at this time.
Elaine? Bonnie? Tammy?
Nothing here.
DJ?
Yeah.
Okay. We do have a, uh, requirement to go into executive session this evening. Uh, I don't think it's going to be a long executive session. Uh, be pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter twenty-one, Section A, Subsection Three, to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or lit, litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. So it requires a roll call vote and we will not be coming back, uh, into public session. We'll adjourn right from there. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, uh, roll call vote to go into executive session.
Mitchell Grofsky, aye.
Carla Rubinstein, aye.
Brittany Newton, aye.
Laura Robinson, aye.
Lisa Bet, aye.
Elaine Gauthier, aye.
Bonnie Godofine, aye.
Tammy Duquette, aye.
Deirdre Mallett, aye.
Okay, thank you. The school committee will, uh, remove itself and go into the library, uh, just for the, the sake of picking up and people leaving at the same time. Thank you.